All right, uh, seeing no one in the lobby, we will have no public comment unless there's somebody in the room would like to speak. There is none. Any reports from the liaisons to the boards? Seeing none, there is none. Um, committee updates? There are no committees. There is none. Wow, fast. Pam, watch.
Watch your track.
I got my son, all right. You're now in charge all the time.
Yeah.
All right, all right, and, uh, all right, so then we'll move on to, uh, item number six, ENE update. Dave Kavanaugh, thank you very much for attending and taking the time to come see us.
Great, thank you for having me here and I'll get the presentation up and we'll go through ENE transmission. Excellent. Again, thanks for having me here to talk about the ENE transmission. Dave Kavanaugh, I'm the Senior VP of Regulatory Market Affairs at Energy New England. I also serve as the Executive Director for ENE transmission, basically the only employee in ENE. Is ENE was formed as a limited liability company in Massachusetts, uh, under Massachusetts General Law 164, 47C as, as a co-op. It was formed to provide a structure for member municipal light plants to participate in pursuit of joint ownership and regional transmission projects. As you may know, um, in this region, it's, it's the incumbent transmission developers that have access to transmission projects. There's been one RFP. There's two. There's one that's underway. There's one previously for the Boston upgrades and that was awarded to, I believe, EverSource, like $49 million. Public powers always look to try to get a foothold into regional transmission projects. Some entities have them. Um, we have a number of, uh, folks that work with ENE that are transmission owners, including RMLD. And they're smaller segments. They're not bigger transmission pieces. Uh, CTMEC, uh, ended up with some transmission based on the negotiation of NU, Northeast Utilities and NSTAR forming. It was part of the deal there that some transmission ran through their area and they ended up with a piece. Uh, and of course, if you look at the original structure of how the Vermont utilities were formed and Velco, uh, by definition, the, the utilities in Vermont have ownership through Velco because Velco is jointly owned. But other than that, there's really limited opportunities for public power to have access to owning transmission. It's been a, a policy level at the APPA level and as well as, uh, NAPA has been looking for that as well. Uh, so ENE was, uh, is, is managed by ENE LLC through myself and John. It has a service agreement. Basically describes what we do in terms of running the organization. It has a chair that is appointed by ENE, uh, and is governed by its Board of Directors. The Board of Directors composed of Class A members. Those are members that can contribute it to the, the startup capital, get ENE up and running. And, uh, and they also can participate in transmission projects. And please do stop me at any time. So if you think about why would you have ENE, why would you form this entity? Well, the municipal light plants are facing known and escalating transmission costs and, and that are projected significant additional costs related to state policy objectives. So right now we have, uh, underway within New England, the longer term transmission planning RFP. And that is an RFP that was closed on, uh, the last day of September at 11:00 PM. And parties had to submit their desired participation proposals. Uh, there'll be a year evaluation, but that's really to unlock the northern regions of Maine and bring uh, clean energy down into the load center. So that's underway right now. So, um, there's been a couple of RFPs. We're, we're structured to help try to get a, uh, participate in those. Again, when you look at what's going on here, municipal light plants are, are charred regional network service. Uh, the costs of the using the transmission system, you all see that on your regional RNS bill. And many municipal light systems, including Reading, have made behind the meter investments to help peak shade to avoid some of those costs. As the revenue stacking for those resources is very beneficial. Uh, costs are paid to the transmission, uh, owners such as EverSource, National Grid, and, and a very small percentage basis system, MLPs and collabs. As I mentioned, Reading, Braintree, Norwood, uh, Middleborough, um, um, CTMAC, uh, some of the Velco folks. MWEK to an extent has some as well, small percentage. They have a little piece of Seabrook, uh, substation, but very small percentages on basis. They do get some revenues from that. But let's talk about really what we're facing here. If you look at the history of RNS rates and we go back to, let's say, 2012, it was $75.25 a KW year. And you can see it steadily rising. And you can see right now, uh, in 2024, it was, uh, 185.28 a KW year. And it dropped down a little bit because there was a bit of a true up, uh, from the previous year to 184. But the forward projection, as you can see, it's going to go, it's projected to go to 186, then 197, 217, and 220 out in the forward years. That's a pretty good rate of change, uh, when you look at the, um, overall cost. Uh, and you're up, you're up to, if you follow it, uh, right, right now to 26, you're at $15.30 a KW month. Relate that to the capacity market that's trading at around $3.85 a month. So it's multiples of the capacity market. So, you know, when you look at the, the region, uh, the transmission build is, is in support of reliability requirements. You know, when they run what's called a needs analysis study as they're required as the regional transmission planner. They identify thermal overloads generally on the system, go into solution study. And then the, uh, they're generally less than three years within the date of need. So they go back to the IOUs and they build them. And that becomes a cost for the region. But what we are seeing is, um, what's happening over the last couple of years and projected forward is going to be the main driver for cost in the region is going to be what's called asset condition upgrades. The system has a lot of older infrastructure, um, laminated wood poles, um, systems that are over a hundred years old. What we're seeing is about a little over a billion dollars a year is just from asset condition upgrades. It is 70% of the annual bill right now, and that doesn't change going forward. The current projections, I've looked out five years, it's still like $1.3 billion a year. As they replace wooden poles, uh, lattice structures, uh, spalling cement areas, they have to refurbish those conditions. And those are what are feeding our current rate. So again, the rates are, uh, good utility practice. These are facilities being upgraded to have a, uh, revolting reliable transmission system, but nonetheless, every year you're adding another billion dollars a year onto that. So, you know, uh, the ISO has been doing a lot of studies and, uh, particularly at the request of the state and some scenario analysis. And they produced 2050 transmission study, which identifies potential future transmission requirements. The new transmission projects are the results of multiple scenario analysis, different loads, different supply mix, um, and different, different, you know, areas of the system. And it also looks at economy-wide electrification, the increased loads, locations and the type and future generation that drive transmission requirements. If you look at this with the zero font, uh, you know, you can see 2035, um, you know, we, we start to become a winter peaking system with a 35 K gigawatt load. And if you stack the projected, what's called, uh, uh, high likelihood concern areas. The areas on the system that really have a high probability to be required to be upgraded or built out. You come up with about six to nine billion dollars at a 35 gigawatt winter load. Fast forward to 2040, you're at 43 gigawatt and you have a price of 11 to 13 billion. Move out to 2050, if you have a 51 gigawatt, uh, build out, you're between 16 and 17 additional dollars, billions of dollars added to transmission rate. We're at about 13 billion right now rate base. You're going to double it in that time. Worst case scenario. And I think the curves have come off, uh, for electrification on an economy-wide basis. You could get to, you know, a winter 57 gigawatt and you're at 23 to 26 billion dollars of additional cost in the transmission base. Yes, Vivek.
So you've shown information here for, I think these are different distribution lines?
These are different regions of the system. Yes, yep.
So is this, uh, do our transmission costs get determined by ISO New England? Or do they get determined by the transmission line, ISO New England as a whole, or by the particular distribution line that is used?
Great, great question. I should not assume people understand how the transmission costs are derived. So it's a, it's a regional transmission cost, right? So at the end of each, well, over the course of a year, uh, the, all the transmission owners put their revenue requirements together, what they need to recover through the rate of return. It's one big pile. They stack it up and then, then they divide it by the expected future load and that becomes your rate. So whatever these projects would be, it would be, let's say they're all going to be what, you know, um, RNS projects, there are cool transmission facilities. It is these areas that are aggregated into the total annual revenue requirement of all transmission providers. And that is spread out over all, uh, network load in the region.
So the network is all of ISO New England or is it for our region?
It is, it is all of ISO New England for the RNS. Then there's LNS, Local Network Service. And you'll have, you know, your PTF connect, you might have some local network service and that's where the things that aren't recovered through RNS and that are more in the, um, if a community decided they wanted to bury the transmission as an alternative to overhead. It could be ruled that that's a local cost because otherwise could have been suspended, uh, as an overhead. But that is LNS that's paid for the local region. But as a, as a practical matter, all the issues here are recovered for a system-wide cost. For all regions of the, of the system.
So the stability of ISO New England as a whole is considered like a common good.
That is correct.
So, so you're trying to keep that common good being?
That is correct. As a regional system planer, they have to, you know, meet all the requirements for their balancing authority and reliability authority. And so it's, it is, it is that very reason, as you said, it's the common good, that the total cost of all the transmission is, is summed and then allocated. Not an elegant term, like peanut butter, over everybody that's paying the bill across all six states. That is correct. Yep. So here we have, these are, these are 20, 2050 transmission study. We can argue that these curves have come off of it. The, the adoption rates are off, so we wouldn't expect to see some of these numbers. But nonetheless, the cost of transmission continues to march forward. So ENE provides an opportunity, it provides, uh, the ENE participants an ability to hedge those costs, uh, those unavoidable transmission costs. You can't avoid them unless you put in behind the meter resources and you're effective at clipping your peaks, then you can remove some of those cost exposures. But here we have, uh, uh, an ability to participate in projects. We, we take, we receive the annual rate of return on equity. Uh, and, um, that comes back to you as a project owner and then that can be used as you, as a owner in ENE, that flows back to you. And then you do with it as you wish in terms of how you fit that into your revenue structure and affect your rates. So really, ENE is providing an opportunity for mark, uh, municipal light plant participation in regional transmission projects, which receive the federal approved rate of return. And it's really a hedge, much like you supply, hedge your supply, your, your energy supply, it's the same thing. This is another hedge to help, uh, avoid or lessen the impact of some of those costs.
Are these costs borne by the federal government at all or just by the beach homes?
The federal, under, what, what happens is, um, there's a, there is an open access transmission tariff. There's a tariff and that's here. Setting aside the other, other meetings that can be derived from that, uh, there, there is, there's a number of tariffs in New England for the markets. But there's the open access transmission tariff, uh, which stipulates how you can build projects, what is recoverable. And also determines the rate. And that is approved by the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission. So the rate is like 10.51 and it has an adder of 5.5 something. It comes out to 11.07. Is the federally approved rate of return for regional transmission projects. Yep. And so that's, that's for every, every year and then January of this year, your new rate picks up. And it would have been this last summer, we would have, I would have circulated what those rates look like. And then there's, there is a full, um, sunshine process, if you will, that this is, all the material is presented. It can be challenged at the commission. The financials are available on the ISO website. Each transmission owner must present their information. And then it's, then it's basically a math formula that says, okay, all these numbers in here comes down to, here's the total revenue requirement. Here's the expected load of that year. Divide those and here comes your rate, 184 KW years, expected, uh, will be the rate. Now you go through the year, the lows might be a little different. You might have a true-up requirement because you have less load. Or you might have more load and it, it's an adjustment that's made on a continual basis, but it's relatively minor relative to the rate itself. Yes, Vivek.
So you're talking, you know, if you're saying $20 billion over the next 20 years, 11% of that is open for profit.
No, it's a great question because, um, not the, our return on equity, right? So there's like maybe a 60, 40 debt equity ratio. So the debt is recovered plus your debt service. It's not, it does not get to 11% rate of return. It's the equity piece that gets the rate of return. So you have $12 billion in the ground right now of transmission. Projections are depending on what we see for loads and requirements, but we know at least a billion a year is coming. It is depend how those projects are financed. If it's a, again, 50, 50, 60, 40, 80, 10, only the equity piece gets that return.
Could you just give us a sense, because I'm looking at this and I also discussed this with, with you earlier, like, help us understand what's the economics for us, right? So, so, so just broadly, I know you, you can't go into specifics, but
No, it's a great question.
Right? So just help us imagine. So we have funded the startup, right? We funded the creation of ENET.
That's correct.
And then help us imagine what cash flow do you need from us going forward and when would we likely get returns?
Which is why I asked him to come tonight.
Great questions. Um, probably want to talk about capitals and, and executives.
Yeah, no, so it's, no, no, so
But as a, as a high level.
Exactly.
It's a high level. Let's, let's, whatever equity you put into the project, right? You would get back that equity on a rate of return of 11.07%. That's the current rate. So every, once a project's commercial, your equity is returned with 11.07% rate of return. It does have a depreciation formula over time. Each, each year is depreciating, but, and so the, the equity piece starts to drop a little bit. But over time, you get your rate of return, it's 11.07%. That every month, once you get commercial and your revenue requirement is captured in the annual revenue requirement that is submitted to the FERC, every month you would receive money that flows back to RMLD for their share of participation in the project. And then you would do what you wish with that. Now, if, if the project had a certain percentage of debt and equity, then it would be a piece that would be debt service, right? And then the rest would be equity or rate of return. So it, it's a, it, at the end, it, it's a hedge against the cost you're going to be charged anyways. So let's presume you took a five, let's go to 5%, 5% debt position. And you're getting 11% rate of return. Your 6% to the good on your cash flows, uh, on your, on your equity piece. That, is that all?
Uh, relating, follow up question to Vivek. So this requires us issuing a bond.
It may.
What the town, the town means going to town meeting and asking for approval to issue a bond and explaining all this to town meeting.
So great, great question. May not, so, um, you're, you're a participant in the, you are now currently a participant in a hydro goback phase one, phase two project. You've been for 20 years. You're on for another 20 years. You're actually, it's a public talk, but you're actually an equity sponsor. And you had a cash call last year. Depending on the cash flow requirements for project for, and you could put cash, you say, hey, it's
Free cash, like, yeah.
If you don't, then ENE would bond as an entity. And then we would charge you, we would charge you that fee for the bonding as we go forward. That, that's, we're, we're talking to bond council now, how we would structure that if we get into a project. But at the end of the day, your experiences with you have right now is your phase one, phase two participation. You had a cash call last September. You'll have more coming for the projects that are going on there. And it might, might fully fit within your cash available such that it's all equity to you. Or we could have a discussion at the ENE board level, depending on the size of the project. Who wants to do, how much bonding do you want us to do? And what your bonding, you know, debt equity structure, how much you want to put in cash. If you look at your cash flows over a seven-year period and say, hey, you know, we, we think we can do extra cent cash, let's just do that. And we'll want you, ENE has a total to bond this and our part is this piece.
So can anybody do, I mean, do MLPs have an ability to do this, uh, kind of financial transaction? Or can any, any entity do this? Could a private equity firm do what you're describing?
Eligibility, I think, is who is eligible to bid. Cause I'm sure it's exclusive up to a certain point, or am I incorrect?
So for an RFP, a qualified transmission, mission project sponsor, effectively known as a Q-tip. Is the only entity that is qualified to participate in an RFP, um, for bid submission. It doesn't mean that they can partner with other entities underneath that to provide cash or whatever and still get that same rate of return. But there's only one entity, a Q-tip, that can participate directly bid on the RFP. And, uh, we have four entities within ENE that are qualified transmission project sponsors. But ENE collectively, even though we have six others that are not, could come in as a partner, strategic partner in an RFP and still put cash into the project and get that same rate of return to the, to probably a special purpose entity that's a qualified transmission project sponsor that, if they win the award, we can pull that through them.
So is, is ENE or ENE T the Q-tip?
ENE, good question. ENE T is the entity.
Right.
ENE T is not a qualified transit, transmission project sponsor. We have members that are, but we are not qualified at this point as a pro, transmission project sponsor. It doesn't prohibit us from, uh, partnering with other entities to participate in an RFP. They would submit under their
We're not qualified, uh, RMLD is not a qualified
You are not. You are not. Yep.
So ENE T is the vehicle to participate?
ENE T is a vehicle to take the collective weight of, right now, 10 entities to have, uh, to participate in a project. That's correct.
But you still have to partner with a qualified transmission.
We do. We could have one of our members do it and we can participate underneath them. Or we can participate with other qualified transmission project sponsors as, as a, as a part.
All this is good, but if we get into real numbers, right?
Yeah.
What realistically, what would MLPs have to be able to put up? And because we always have other uses for that cash, right? So the question is, is this best use of our cash and how, how, how much would be really required? Because
Yeah, what's the, what's the
So, so at least, I, at least for us, you know, I, I know we are
You know what? I, that might be a question we don't want to discuss at this point. I, I, again, that might be something that we're getting a framework. Let's talk about framework. If we're going to talk about numbers, let's, let's take numbers.
No, I, 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 I understand the sensitivity of numbers, but I'm just getting a sense of magnitude of numbers, right?
Vivek, let's not talk any numbers, right? Because I, I, I don't think that's appropriate at this point. Let's just get, let's understand. I'd love to see that number, but I think that's something we can discuss. Uh, Dave, I, I know your comfort level, but, um, with, with discussing numbers, but I I, well, that's, well, that's, that's how much is being spent in the region.
Oh, but so, so my, my question is, what is, what would, yeah, so see like we're, we're talking budgets today, right? So that, that my, so at some time, you know, it would be helpful for RMLD to understand what is the, the, what is going to be the ask, right? And it's just, and it's just good for us to be aware of it.
Are we talking?
Hundred percent.
Six, six, obviously it's six, seven figures, right? Is it multiples? Is it, is it much greater than that? And, and then that, that's can, that can get scary. So I, I
So the, the, what will help is I go further into the structure of ENE and we can see how that, how you come to those conclusions. Uh, how the board, how I bring a project to the board and then the board decides whether to move forward with the project or not. But scale, right? I mean, you know, there's a limitation on how much 10 municipal systems are going to put into a project. You could think about the Watsons. They're $90 million or $110 million. You're a participant in that, right?
What is, what was that again?
The Watson Generation units, right? That was like, okay, there's a, like $110 million. You're a participant in that. I think there's only like four or five participants in that one. So there's, these are, there's projects
So, so I, I think just the fact that you have 10 entities
Yeah.
That are your sponsors. I guess there's some common sense there that, you know, if needed, these people can produce the cash, right? I mean,
That's correct.
Right? So
There would, you, you would imagine this, that you have this discussion about a project. And the board, everybody sitting around the room that hears about the project is going to have to decide what is the appropriate level of participation? For the group or for themselves. Somebody could participate at a greater level than somebody else. It's, it doesn't have to be an equal distribution. It is the decision by the board to participate and then who at what level wishes to participate. And that would be, we're all, MLPs by, by nature are risk averse. So this is about a fiscal hedge against the costs that are coming to you anyways. And is the value proposition there to be participating?
Yeah. So, so I agree with Bob, that you know, this is, this is not the right forum to get that information. But I think it's, it's helpful for us to have that.
Happy to come back and have a, or an executive session, have a discussion about
And, and, and I think we've had a lot of ENE updates, so I, I, I'm not in a hurry for more right now.
Oh, my. I think I've just said enough already.
Like you go to the first year. But yeah, so I mean, happy to come back, you know, and talk about that for sure. Okay, next slide. Structurally governance, it, it, ENE T is composed of Board of Directors in our transmission operating agreement. There's one director from each Class A member and those Class A members right now are parties that contributed to the startup. Chairman of Board may, may vote as a director in accordance with the rules or they're ex aficionado. Right now, the chairman of the board does vote as a director. Uh, the executive director, that's me, I may vote as a director as well, but I do not. I, I am, I am an ex aficionado. I don't vote. I'm there to provide content for the discussion, uh, make sure we, you know, make notices, bring proposals forward, update on what we're doing.
Who's the chair?
Right now, Kevin Chauncey from Norwood is the chair.
Okay.
Yep. The chairman is appointed by ENE T under our operate, by ENE under our operating group. We have a management agreement with ENE T. ENE T is a standalone entity, but we have a management agreement. That's the employee right here, the only one right now. It is, uh, when I, for me, it's been the last couple of years setting it up, uh, putting the structures in place and then going out and having conversations on participation in projects. Yes.
So as a Class A member, are board members allowed to participate personally in the projects? Or does that just come through their chairs?
Great question. We're going to cover that, but it's a great question. So each, each, a Class A member can sit on the board. It's, it's a general manager equivalent of, of an MLP. When we get to deciding on, I, I bring a project, well, let's go there. I bring in a potential project to the board for consideration. Um, you know, we've had a few conversations with different entities. We talk about what it is, the shape of it, what's it look like, what's, is it a good project for the region? Is it something we have interest in? And we decided, let's move forward, have that conversation. Let's imagine you get further on down the road with the counterparty and they're saying, well, let's get into term sheets. Let's talk about your level of participation. Then the board would say, okay, we're willing to participate at X level. Not everybody has to participate. It is purely a voluntary participation. If nine of 10 want in, nine of 10 want in. And if nine of the 10 are in, there could be a different distribution of costs that they decide to take on in that project. So this is strictly an opportunity. Here's the projects. The board says, yes, it's a good project. Even when the board says it's a good project, everybody may not want to take a piece of that. They may be in another project. They may be just not ready to go at this point in time. It's purely a decision they make at that point in time. In and to what level they wish to participate.
So they can participate personally if they so choose.
That is correct.
Through the partnership that
They, they can participate in a project, uh, of their choosing. Yes, yeah. It's purely, uh, we didn't want to set up a thing where we're like, hey, we just got into a project and you're in. No, we want everybody to have the same in the matter as we move forward projects.
And we've done that as reading light and other projects with ENE.
Certainly, uh, with a lot of the power supply projects, um, absolutely. Uh, you know, we're, we're part of some pretty big solar projects in the region, uh, that we are fully, ENE T customers fully subscribe it for long-term. So there's been, you know, if you think about it, some of the projects you're in are probably contribution levels of what you would do in this framework, same thing with 40-year versus the 20-year, uh, uh, payback. Uh, payback. Oh, there's ten class A members right now that is grown. Uh, we started with seven right out of the box, uh, Braintree, Redding, Taunton, Middleborough, Westfield, Norwood. Um, Littleton came on, Middleton came on, Hingham was on as the class B, moved to a class A, and then Holden came on. So we're at ten right now. Uh, as class A members, Hingham came in as the class B initially. Uh, what, what was the class B? Class B is they didn't pay any startup. They could attend the meetings, couldn't vote, just following along to see if they wanted to participate. Eventually Hingham says, yeah, we're class A. They jumped in, uh, because we had some conversations going on that were of interest. And again, uh, uh, only a class A members can vote. That's E N E T. Again, oh, the overarching can construct, construct is to bring enough weight of enough systems to be able to participate in regional transmission projects. The current long-term transmission uh, uh, project, uh, RFPs out there will, we could see um, an RFP on the uh, storage as a transmission asset only. Those are ten thirty megawatt grid scale storage projects that could come in in twenty six or twenty seven. Um, and then there's what's called the system efficiency network studies. It used to be called market efficiency studies. We never had one. But this uh, system efficiency network is looking at uh, boundary conditions on interfaces. And where they identify significant losses, four point three million or greater, they test that against a, a solution. If the solution provides a benefit cost ratio of one or better, we, we should be indifferent to the spend. That can go into an RFP space, another opportunity to participate. I like that. It's a little smaller. Uh, it gives us a shot at different solutions. Yes, with that.
So just a question of the, the whole logic of doing this is to effectively reduce the cost of transmission in the ratepayers bill, right? So the ratepayers are being charged at a certain timeframe.
Yes.
When they're using that service. And will the dividends also come out in the same, in the same timeframe? Because to, to, to give a benefit, you need to be getting the savings.
So let's say R M L D is in a project. Uh, there's a, there's, of course, there's, the project starts up, goes into construction phase, then we have a C O D. Project comes online. As you lead into the project development, you're putting capital in. And then when the project goes live for the next forty years, you're getting a rate of return on any equity you put in eleven point oh seven percent. If you took debts, it's your debt plus debt service you get back. But that, that revenue on your investment flows back to R M L D for its share of contribution. And that flows into your coffers to, to, to manage you as you wish.
Whenever you get energy on that line, you get revenues on that line also. You get a return on that line at the same time.
It's you, you're not getting any ev- uh, any energy. This is strictly, you're paying for the infrastructure that keeps the region reliable.
Correct. You're not getting energy, but just, but that, that line is in play, that line is.
That line is part of the regional system. It is part of, it is part of what keeps us reliable. You, you do that right now and the benefit you get today uh, for your eh, monthly R N S bill is you get a reduction in the capacity that the region buys, tie benefits. R N S customer support the regional transmission system. I so when it determines how much capacity each year the system must buy, then the net install capacity requirement that gets to that number by using tie benefits, how much we can lean on control areas and emergency assistance. Because you all pay for that through R N S, it's a natural benefit to us that they reduce the capacity requirement by the amount of neighbor support we can get during um, emergency conditions. Here, you would be getting that same benefit, but you would also be getting your rate of return on your equity and any cost of debt plus debt service.
What, what's the depreciation schedule for transmission lines?
Uh, it, well, generally a forty year asset. Um, I don't remember the formula off the top of my head, uh, but it's a forty year asset that um.
Could be, I mean, straight line depreciation would be over forty years.
Could, yeah, exactly. Yes. And so something to consider is, and this is important to consider, is much like your involvement in the hydro Quebec phase one, phase two as an equity sponsor. So you have your initial development and implementation and then the lines went great for thirty years and then you have to start replacing components. And the asset condition upgrades I just mentioned, you would inject capital again and that would start that cycle all over with those investments. That's exactly what's going on with you with the phase one, phase two. You're paying for um, currently the insulator replacement project on that line and contemplation of a, a, on a future builds on that facility to take into the next twenty years, because you're in a twenty year agreement right with them right now. But it's the same idea.
And and one more question on the capital stack with equity and debt and the rate of return. Can you go over that again? How, the, the rate of return is, is equity, it's, it's assets under ownership?
That's correct.
The debt component is not capitalized.
It is, it is part of the project, but you get the return of your debt plus your debt service. It's not, doesn't get the eleven point oh seven uh, ROE.
Right. But the equity, all equity infusions get the eleven.
That's correct. That's correct.
It's not a weighted average that comes back to.
It is all equity gets eleven oh seven. I could send you a tariff sheets, but there, I mean, there, there, it is the eleven oh sevens on the rate of return. In fact, ironically, you all have been fighting the rate of return for about eight years in federal proceeding to, to drive it lower. Uh, um, it's, it's been moved, moved a few times. It's now eleven oh seven. That's the current rate of return. It's the same rate of return frankly, that you're getting on your capital investments, uh, in the phase one, phase two projects.
Dave, how competitive are these Q-tip projects? I, I, I can imagine with that type of return, that is a very attractive market for anybody.
Exactly.
And, and how, is there any type of waiting for when you're participating as a municipal? Uh, we, uh, we delivered a higher um, ranking or is there anything like that? Because you could see that this, I'm, I'm shocked that we, we're even allowed to participate at those rates of return. So.
Wouldn't want to have a guaranteed eleven percent. It's a, it's a great question and, and that's, and I'll say this, that's why we've been held out is because the, the incumbent uh, transmission developers didn't have to let us participate, right? They, they, if it, if today I so runs a need analysis for, let's say, Southwest Connecticut and it says, oh, we've got to upgrade these lines, pull new conductor. And that report comes out today and the need was in three years, it never goes to bid. It's automatically awarded to the T O and they do it as soon as per case. Um, but now the states said, look, we want this as an RFP because it's out beyond three years. It's actually the current longer term transmission uh, planning RFP. The C O D for that is must be sealed commercial operation date by twenty thirty five. So it's far and about. The states want a diversity of, of, of participants. And in fact, when the window closed on the last day of September, they've got their submissions with six projects came in. Six projects split between D C solutions and H V D C solutions. And that project has to increase the interface limits for Sar- Maine, Syracuse South and New Hampshire Maine interface, each by a, a, you know, thousand or so megawatts. Has to build a twelve hundred megawatt um, um, three forty five K V switchyard in Pittsfield, Maine to allow interconnection of twelve hundred megawatts of terrestrial wind. Why? The states want to feed that clean energy down the coast. So that L, that R P has got six parties participating. Three projects of A C, three projects of D C. It had a diversity of um, incumbent qualified transmission project sponsors, some new qualified transmission project sponsors. And then a mix uh, of joint proposals uh, that are in there. The range of those solutions, the proposals, it's point nine six billion to four point oh four billion with two in about the two point two five billion range. Um, pretty big projects, but you're right. It, it gra- it grabbed a fair amount of attention. And that we're now underway in the region, not us, the I so is analyzing those projects to select the winner. And how do they determine a winner? It goes to your point of public power involved. Uh, they select the winner. At the end of the day, they look at the projects. Did it meet all the requirements of the, of stipulated in the RFP? Did it provide additional benefits that were not in the RFP? That's great. It has to be measured against about eight different cri- eight different criteria. Production costs, savings, um, losses, savings, uh, the lower cost of generation interconnections. Um, there's a whole list of them. And then there's a whole bunch of non-technical appendix A criteria that the New England States Committee on Electricity provided that I so must evaluate against reduction of carbon, who's involved, who's other product, are they co-sponsored by other participants of interest? That would be us, public power. So there's a, there's a diverse set of um, technical, financial review requirements and non-technical review requirements. At the end of the day, there'll be one project selected out of the six proposals. And it must, for I so to recommend it moves forward, it must achieve a benefit to cost ratio of one or greater. Those financial evaluations, it must played out that it's one or greater. If it's one or greater, the I so says, states, we think you should move forward with this. And then NESCO would say, let's move forward. That is the solution. Let's move forward, whoever that winner is. And then we're off and running. Must be online by twenty thirty five. Alternatively, if no project has a B C R of one or greater, or the project that the states want is less than one, then they could say, we still want to move forward because it, it does something we want it to do for us besides, you know, um, transmission upgrades and will now they, the states would say, oh, that project was, for simple math, that project was a billion dollars. Six hundred million of that was stuff from a needs analysis, regular regional system planning requirements and asset condition upgrades. That's six hundred million goes into the regular R N S monthly bill. It's got to be done anyways. The other four hundred million, we're going to, we, the states will file it Burke under section two oh five of the Power Act saying, look, we want to divide this cost up this way. State of Massachusetts will take the whole thing. Or five of the six states will take the whole thing, or three of the six states, that's a separate matter. But this is a very big evaluation process, process. Not only does it have to meet the actual capabilities functionally, it must meet the R P requirements. Then it must meet this B C R test and then it gets a second set of evaluations that the states provide a little, um, they're not financial, they're more um, substantive in terms of uh, carbon reductions and other things. Hopefully that's responsive to your question.
Yes, and so it is a component of this collection process. You know, they could say.
There wasn't, there wasn't.
Blackrock or Redding Light.
Well, there was a, um.
Well, you're looking, I mean, you're looking to enter into a consortium, right, of
That's correct.
These projects. You, you're not.
Public power in of itself is not big enough to build one of these himself. That is absolutely true. It's, it's much like phase one, phase two.
Merck and, and figure out.
That is correct.
For MLPs in the greater consortium.
That is correct.
Which would include a developer, uh, I'm, I'm sure and all the spons, all the other sponsors, et cetera, et cetera.
The consortium could be made up of a, of different people, different entities. That is absolutely correct. And all with the same opportunity to inject capital and get the returns depending on, you know, how they put it. That's correct.
Any other question?
I have one. I'm new to this, as you know, and I'm trying to pick up as everyone's going vote. And I come from a completely different business. Is this something that I can read, like a disclosure statement of what this is really about or a prospectus or something to give me more information besides the presentation?
I could send, I can send you the um, the RFP. It's not very long. It's, it's not very many pages. Um, and then um, I can include some content as to what it is. So in this instance, this R P we're speaking about is issued by the states. But I so New England or the tear has to administer it. And it is now closed and I can describe what, what they're trying to achieve. Um, and as we heard here, our, our discussion point is we're subject to those costs. We can't avoid those costs and those costs are going up and the cost of this project will be thrown into the hopper and recovered through that same mechanism. And the purpose of the E N E T vehicle is to allow the members to go out, participate in that project and use the rate of return above their costs as a way of paying down the exposure they have much. It's, it's a hedge. Yeah. So I'm happy to pr- provide Paul some information to share with you all. Um.
It sounds like everyone is more, of course, more familiar than me, but I, I'd like to get up to speed.
And you should feel free to stop me at any time when I'm talking. Uh, now or in the future, when you have me back, uh, really, it's, there's, it's, you know, it's a new space and um, a- as we just highlighted though, public power in and of itself would not put two billion dollars, four billion dollars, a billion dollars to build these projects. We are looking to join a consortium. Uh, or in the future state, if we decide to move um, E N E T to a Q-tip, a qualified transmission project sponsor, we could get there, but in the short run, we wasn't, we didn't need to. But um, yes, so thanks for the question. Happy to provide some material.
I quit saying Q-tip because Megan kept laughing.
Oh, we don't, we, we, we get it's a whole, the whole other set of uh, acronym squat spa and all the type of stuff. It's like a.
Acronym.
It is. I have to remember what they are, but anyways, yeah, they, they live in the world of acronyms, but anyway, so. Well, hopefully that's helpful.
Yeah, no, I, I found it very informative and I'm sure important. Well, thank you very much, Dave. Appreciate your time.
I started seeing the numbers and then I asked her, how much conversation, you know, did has the board had over this? And it didn't appear to be that much. I figured this is a perfect opportunity to kind of open everybody's eyes up to just magnitude, scope of what we're, what, what we are into.
Excellent. Thank you.
Great.
Appreciate it.
Like, good to see everybody again. Look forward to seeing you in the near future.
Yes.
All right. Good. Thank you.
All right, moving on to the capital budget for twenty twenty six approval, attachment two. You want to read the, read the motion and then go over the data or you want to um, go over the data and read the motion?
Let's go.
Okay, we'll go over the data uh, first, uh, the updates from the capital budget. Uh, and then the cab will read their motion and then we'll, we'll go to the board of commissioners. So I don't know, um, everybody saw the email. I don't know, uh, Patty, how you want to handle it? You want to just go over the updates that, that you provided? You want to? Yeah, well, I, I think Aaron sent the email out. I'm listening too soon. I don't have my phone on me. I don't, did anybody recall who sent the email?
Maybe Erica.
Erica.
Did I?
Yeah.
Erica. Erica. Erica sent it. Okay. Erica and Erin.
Okay. Last week, uh, it was, uh, we recommended that we put additional money in the budget for the cost of service study, in which we did, we put another fifty thousand into the G M outside services um, budget.
Patty, pardon me. So I told the, the various municipal land plan general managers, hey, who's done a cost of service study lately and what did it cost you? And that was the.
Yeah. Okay, um, so, so this affected the budget book pages eighty one to eighty seven. Um, there was a.
It went up by forty four point nine, forty four point nine K, not fifty. That, that line.
That was everything. So, um, anyway, there was also discussion about the, the discrepancy between the net plant figures on one statement to the other. And we realized there was a number that was put in the wrong column on one of the statements and that was actually the co- the number that was projected for calendar year twenty five total and not the ca- the budget calendar year twenty six. So this correction, uh, and the update of the other years changed the I O R figures on page eighty one in the budget book. And then going forward.
And it brought it down from ten point something to eight point.
To eight point eight four, I believe. Yeah. Um, going forward, we'll ensure that we sync the two statements before the budget is completed. Uh, there was also a question regarding the increase in uh, health premiums and it was, there is going to be an increase of thirteen and a half percent. And we had already covered that in the budget with an assumed increase of about fourteen percent. And then there was questions regarding the O and M decreases from projected to the budget and they were explained by a greater amount of operating labor going to capital projects. I think that was it.
Are there any questions from anybody?
When we did talk about C I S system, you asked her.
That, that's in the capital budget.
Oh, okay.
Okay. No further questions? Okay. You guys wanna uh? Make your motion?
Okay, so um. Do you guys have any questions? Be comfortable with the budget, you don't want it?
Moved at the RMLD Citizens Advisory Board recommend to the RMLD Board of Commissioners to calendar year twenty twenty-six. Operating budget as presented on the recommendation of the interim general manager.
Second.
Second.
All in, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. David, Richard?
I'll take that. Moved at the RMLD Board of Commissioners on the recommendations of, uh, recommendation of the RMLD Citizens Advisory Board. Uh, approved the calendar year twenty twenty-six operating budget as presented on the recommendation of the interim general manager.
I'll second that. I will call vote, because Ben's remote.
And Escala, cause I.
Swanson, aye?
How would I? Uh, culture, aye? Passes four zero. Okay, moving over to the capital budget. Alright. Are there any um questions on the capital budget? I know, um.
Yes.
Okay.
We had asked a question about the capital, the CIS project. And could, you want to just clarify, what, what, what is being done about that project? Because uh, I, I, I think that there is a need to improve the, the whole system and. Uh, yeah, so could, could you just comment on that?
Yeah, so it was just a re. Paul, could you just re, recap? But it was like four hundred thousand dollar request, right? I think that was the basis of. Were you saying that is enough money? Or is it?
It, it was just a line saying this will be a new improved system. So I just want to understand. Because, because I think there is a need to improve the system. And so I just want to understand what all is going to be done about it. So, so I just want to understand more about the project.
The question. Yeah, the question you have.
Uh, I, 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 I let Paul answer.
So Vivek had a, a series of questions about what, what were we hoping the new system was gonna do for us? You know, all that kind of stuff, not specifically about, you know, how much is four hundred enough or is it not?
And like, we were not asking, you know, what software are you buying and, you know, why are you buying from this vendor? It was more a question of, yeah, so actually, why don't you read the questions? Sorry.
Okay, um, this. We've seen some issues on reporting of, of budget in, in consistency, how you plan to determine communication. This is a challenge for many small organizations. They'll, they'll understand how information is going to go into CIS. And what is planned for training for folks using the new system? How long is it likely going to take for the new CIS system to be implemented and used effectively by our, our MLD?
So my response back to Vivek was that, as you know, we're in the midst, we're not the midst. We're, uh, we're getting ready to start installing the AMI meters. There are issues having the number of systems to talk to each other. Same folks that would be putting together the RFP for the new system. Are the same people who are working with various vendors to try and get the system to talk to each other. I didn't feel that we could do both of them well. And the fact that we have like five hundred meters sitting here and we're kind of anxious to get started. I made a decision to hold off doing anything CIS system until we get this integration together. Because, you know, you can only do so much at any given time. So I made a decision, you know, sit tight on this for a second. As we get closer to getting these four systems integrated into AMI. Then we could kind of move to, what do we want this new CIS system to do for us?
We're talking more just CIS, that's customer information system, plus FIS, financial information system.
Right, correct.
So one is the CIS, the CIS is your customer.
That, that everybody's using, has been using CIS.
Yeah, the line item just said CIS, four hundred thousand.
So, but this is, this is helpful. So what are the four systems? You said four. There's the financial integration system, there's the customer.
He talks about CIS, I'm talking about AMI. There are four systems that need to talk to each other.
And, and those are?
I don't know what the name's on the top of my head.
Meter data management software, okay?
We have the AMI meters and then we have the head end system, uh, part of the AMI system. And we have the MDM and the meter data management system. The system is from the same vendor for the CIS. So actually, to be accurate. This new investment that we put in the budget shouldn't be CIS, it should be ER.
Yeah, it's, yeah.
Okay.
System. So it's not just CIS.
So, but, so it, but it includes CIS, the customer information system.
The emphasis to, to do this is the financial piece of our current ERP. Uh, the support for that is expiring by twenty-third. So we would, we would be looking for a new system, anything.
So, so I, I think that exactly what Paul had said, the problems we're running into is trying to get these disparate systems to talk to each other. Is one of the biggest problems that we have. Every time we try to do something with, we've got sixteen or seventeen different applications, different vendors. Uh, it's not a holistic system, it's incredibly inefficient, it's very labor and manual, manual labor intensive that we spend a lot of time. It's prone to error when you have people, you know, hand jamming in numbers and trying to figure out things. But like, like Paul said, until we, right now, we have to get, you know, the ability to, to, to do the building, to roll out the meters. And then we'll get a little bit of breathing room that we certainly should, as quickly as, you know, we can safely do so. Look at and evaluate, finish evaluating and deciding on a new system.
What you want for twenty twenty-six?
Well, the thing, uh, if I look at the timeline after talking to, to the vendors uh that we have talked to. It's gonna be a multi-year, it's not gonna be done at twenty twenty-six. So that, that four hundred thousand is for twenty twenty-six. It's gonna go into twenty twenty-seven. But um, in the, in the financial analysis, at least of one of the solutions. It's a wash. It's not gonna cost us any additional money, you know, over what we're spending. Because you're gonna be eliminating all these other applications to support for them, and then the infrastructure that we need to have to support those as well, so.
Did you talk to different vendors already?
We, we did, uh, we talked to three different vendors, we had demos, um. And that's where, that's where, so we got some quotes back, but we haven't, there's been no decision made on it. And um, I don't know if it's gonna go to RFP, if that decision, I guess, well, Jason will be involved in that when he comes on board.
So that might be helpful if we saw an RFP, so we know what systems are included in the, the proposal. Right now, just seeing the line item CIS, four hundred thousand, it's kind of. It opens up questions.
So the budget for.
Right.
So we have to, even if this money doesn't get spent twenty twenty-six, you have to have funds available to award the bid to cover the cost of all the biggest. So if they've got quotes back, I'm sure they're somewhere in that ballpark. Maybe a little bit of an adder for being a hero and.
It, it, it's a little different in the municipal world, if, if you're not familiar yet. Oh, no, I'm, I'm okay with four hundred thousand personally. Yeah, yeah. But I just, in the meeting last week, or, yeah, last week, we talked about the, uh, pay, accounting system. That wasn't in it, but that somebody.
No, it's definitely, there's definitely a full financial package there.
I just want to know what's included in the CIS.
Is the outage management. I, we can, we can get you a list of, without being like vendor specific, but it's, it's a, it's, it's purpose built for. Utilities just like us, you know, so it's, it's a holistic solution. It's just about probably ninety-five percent of what we need. And uh, but we can get you a list of different items.
So, so, so what Paul said is that AMI goes first. And once the AMI is well on its way.
Well, the integration, not necessarily the installation.
Right, right, okay. Once the integration of the, 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 the software piece is. Underway, then you will undertake. Then Jason. The next step.
Retrofitting, new system back in after you've already done the integration?
No, so the, the integration that I'm talking about is the various components, Megan.
Yes, so right now, we have need, Megan, sorry, we just need the mic.
So right now, the, there are five hundred AMI meters on our property, ready to be installed. But we cannot install those unless we can actually bill customers through those, those new meters. So what we are, we have been working on uh for a while is to uh, for the uh, the. Tentacles meters, meter reads to be transferred to the meter data management system, which we actually had. So for the MDM project, I think you've heard me talk about it in the last, last uh, past year or so. Uh, we started that, the, the, kind of the, uh, the, the commissioning of that project last summer. And by this past February, we finished the phase one uh SAT. SAT is the system acceptance testing, which means the meters, the data management system is working. Because it's receiving all the reads from our current ITON and Eaton meters, they work fine. And then the second phase of the MDM project is to integrate with tentacles meters. And tentacles meters were just delivered, uh, I think at the end of August. So then, uh, Nick, our metering department, they, they started to put in some meters on our property. So that I can create some reads. So we started the second phase of that integration uh sometime in September. And um, so the first part is for the meter reads to be transferred to MDM is all correct. Up till now, it's still not correct because the tentacles meters, um, the meter reads, the mission reads were not corrected. So the MDM is now receiving all the meter reads. So the intent of using the MDM is to use the interval data to get to the total registry. So the old way of uh getting the meter reads is just to do a registry. But you get two and then you subtract one from the other, then you get your consumption and you bill on top of that. So there's some, a lot of nuanced issues that we're trying to deal with, both tentacles and MDM. That's the first step. The second step, once MDM's receiving all the reads and can do all the calculation that matches the registry. Those data will become billing files that will go to the billing system, which is CogStil, currently we use CogStil. And that's another piece of integration. We don't know at this point. Uh, I'm pretty sure it's gonna take a while for them to actually receive the files and actually can do that calculation. Because they have to manipulate the, the rate template to be able to consume the, these new billing files. So that's the two big pieces of integration we have to really get done before we install the very first tentacle meter on our customers.
Because we can't bill.
So you will retrofit the systems, but it's kind of the only way that you can. It would probably be just from the end of CIS, right? The other stuff that's there, you stop to do on stage, it would just be.
And, and the other impetus for uh getting a new ERP is actually from the operations side. Where we, we heard, I, I, I'm not from the operations side, but the, the operations team has been. Struggling with the current system where half of the work is done manually. Or because the different, you know, we use Sprite Point, I think, you know, some of the information cannot be really. Uh, be connected to the, the, what is it called? Payroll uh system. So a lot of the data entries done manually right now. So that was the other impetus for, for getting a new ERP. But I see John wanted to talk.
Yeah.
Rich, just to go back, instead of, of retrofitting stuff, uh. The new, or at least the solutions that we look at, they're fully integrated, right? So you're buying, it's a commodity product, right? You're not, you're not going to the vendor and saying, I want, you know, this to do exactly this, exactly that. They, they have a product that's already been, that's been rolled out to other customers all over the country. Here's the product, here's the financials, here's their meter data management, here's their OMS. Because right now, all of our stuff is just all over the place, right? So the challenge of keeping everything running and then trying to add to it. You know, it just, it just draws up that timeline and that, that's what I was referring to is, you know, it's labor intensive to try to, try to operate like that. But I, I know you're saying retrofitting, but really, to, in my mind, what we would do is we'd stand up a parallel system. The, the, the database is the database, that's what the data, what's your data? It's, it's the financial information, sure, but primarily for billing, it's the meter reads, right? So it's sharing the same data as the, the, the new system and the old system, the current system. Once everyone is trained up, up to speed on the new system, you go over to it. They're gonna be up a parallel.
Yeah. Thank you.
Yep.
Yeah, so that's what, at least this kind of detail is like, you know, that was just one line. I, I just wanted to get someone colored on this.
Okay, uh, are there any more questions on the capital budget? Not, oh, need to go to you, Vivek?
Okay.
The Citizens Advisory Board recommend to the RMD Board of Commissioners. The calendar year twenty twenty-six capital budget as presented on the recommendation of the interim general manager.
Second.
Second.
Yeah, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Would, uh, someone like to read the motion?
You want me to do it? I'll do it. Uh, moved at the RMLD Board of Commissioners on the recommendation of the RMLD Citizens Advisory Board. Approved the calendar year twenty twenty-six capital budget as presented on the recommendation of the interim general manager.
Second. All in favor?
Escala, cause I.
Thank you.
Swanson, aye?
Culture, aye? Just culture, aye? Yes, four zero. Alright, on to the next item, uh, Paul?
Yes, so uh, I don't have too much, but I, I want to uh give the BOC a heads up. You're gonna be getting uh via Adobe, the IBDW contract to sign. Once that happens, then that kind of sticks a fork in that for the next three years and those folks can get their raises, because they haven't yet. So if you keep your eyes open the next couple of days for that. Everybody in the IBDW would be very much appreciate.
Happy Christmas.
Hey.
Happy Christmas.
Oh, good.
And basically that's the, I'm gonna, we kind of, I was gonna talk about the AMI integration, but we kicked that horse pretty well dead. We've ran it over, backed up a couple of times, so.
You're welcome.
Thank you for that. Awesome. That's it for me.
Okay. Alright, moving on to scheduling, uh, upcoming meetings, uh, Wednesday, uh, December seventeenth. Is the next one on the schedule?
Probably get a couple of meetings between now and then, you think, Bob?
No.
And just by mere useless animation, eighteen, eight zero so far this year.
No.
Yes.
Stop. That counts.
Eight zero.
That's kind of.
General manager in him for ten years. I don't know if I have eighty.
That's gotta include committees and uh.
Meeting.
Lunch order.
Folks had to get paperwork out for.
Really? No, that's, that.
Because it seemed to be like, man, we.
I think we did.
Pay this year.
Because we get paid by the.
One meeting? Yeah, there you go. One meeting, right there.
Yeah, there you go.
Two meetings, right there. Yeah, fabulous. But no, that's a lot of work by everybody, or it uh, end result. Right in here and, right there and, and so, and everybody in the room. It's, it, it, the support network here and the, uh, the, the team, again, can't say enough about how, how seamless it is. So we get data, we come back, we have the information, we ask, it shows up magically. So it's a, it's, it's a great. Well, it's for us, magic. So, alright, um, so no, no issues with the schedule coming up? Um, do we, we, I know we set up a couple other, did we set January?
Nope.
Do we want to set January?
Um, we can. I'm not available on Wednesday.
That's gonna be my big thing. So we're gonna have, ideally, I'd love to have, you know, every month, we do it on a Wednesday. That's just nightly, not Wednesday, but any.
Yeah.
Exactly. It looks like if one of you can't do Wednesdays and one can't do Thursdays, Monday, Tuesdays.
I'm, I'm Tuesday, I'm, I'm more inclined for a Tuesday than a Monday. I know one's Monday, meaning.
Yeah.
But, okay, two.
I don't know, Jason, if you have.
Pam?
Yeah, uh, Tuesday would be fine.
Yeah, uh, Tuesday would be fine.
Okay.
Third Tuesday, fourth Tuesday.
Doesn't really matter to me.
Any particular week in a month better?
I, I would, I, I.
Only because we may have a new general manager at that time.
Yeah, so I, I'd say at least the second week of January. Um, not the, not January fourth. I'm not up, I'm not up for January fourth.
No, the nineteenth is a holiday.
Thirteenth. January.
Second or third week.
We have the twentieth or the twenty seventh for January.
That, there's, someone said, what, what's the holiday? Don't know, I mean, that's the nineteenth. Oh, so it would be, that's the nineteenth. Okay, so we get to do the.
Twenty or the, the.
The thirteenth is the second.
You don't want to do the second week? I mean, the one thing we do have to do and then we'll get out of your way is goals, right? With the get, that's the kind of big one for January.
Yeah.
So that might be, or do you want us to give you three weeks rather than two weeks to settle in? Okay, fine. Alright, enough said.
Yeah, um. Okay, so if, if, if that one's okay on the twentieth of January? Twenty twenty six.
And what time are we like in? We like sixth, we want to go earlier.
Six is good, time to get people here, out of work and through traffic and.
Six, six is good. I, I prefer six to seven.
Yeah, me too. I heard so, two, seven, so. Six to seven, sixty minute meetings.
Six to seven.
I'm going to have Bob run the meeting.
That's up to the chair.
Alright, so next meeting will be January twentieth. Uh, joint meeting. And we'll, we'll pick the next one after that. We'll go.
Okay.
Because I think we might have to have a couple of pause. We're, we're way behind on housekeeping type, uh, stuff, but we've been very busy, so we might have to do two in February or. Pick up, pick up the next one. Eighty four, eighty five.
Your way to eighty pretty quick.
Yeah, exactly. Okay, alright, so that's good. And then the schedule will be, uh, Rich and Pam, A P and, uh, payroll. In December, uh, myself, A P and, uh, Ray will be payroll. Okay, and Pat, if you did not see Patty's note, anybody did not see Patty's note about, uh, the timing of. Thanksgiving week, so that will. Okay. Okay, so, just, just be aware. So, if you need anything, I know, uh, I think, uh. Erica has our cell phone number, so if you need something approved, I would say to the text, it's like, yes, do it today. By noon, please, and then that way it'll get done, because I, I know, I know we're all using our email, but some of us are more responsive than others. So, um, but that would be good. Alright, excellent.
Okay. Can you get a motion?
Moved at the R M L D citizens advisory board adjourned regular session, roll call vote required.
Okay, okay. All in favor?
Kim Woods, I.
Vivek Soni, I.
Thank you. Okay.
Uh, moved at the R M L D board of commissioners adjourned regular session. Seconds.
All those in favor? Roll call.
Escala, cause I.
Swanson, I.
How would I?
Alright, thank you, everybody.